All right, let's bow our heads and open up in prayer this day. Good God, Heavenly Father, we have been fed by your word, by word and sacrament. We've also been fed this day through the efforts generosity of the weight, and we've been fed by the fellowship you give us with one another. We give you our thanks and our praise for this. And now, Lord, as we are fed information about the financial condition of our congregation, we pray that you will grant us hearts of wisdom and discernment. So we ask the questions we need to ask, we absorb the information we need to absorb, so that we are assured and we move forward strengthened by this body of believers called Holy Cross. So bless the efforts of those who shared this day. And Lord, I give you special thanks this day for the efforts of Dan, who will share with us, and also Henry, and also the leadership of Davis. So bless these men as they continue to work your will, your way. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, everybody, today for being here. The reason we're here is a couple of months ago, we were all at a voters' meeting, or a couple of different voters' meetings, in another town hall. And during that time, we asked you guys for feedback on what you wanted to hear. So again, a little Board 101, the congregation. You guys are the owners of the church. And we asked you guys to tell us what you wanted to learn about or hear. The board said, hey, we want to be more transparent and in front of you and talk to you guys more. We can't lead what you delegate us to do if we don't talk to you. And I think it was clear, the first thing that everybody said that they wanted to learn about or hear more about was the finances. So today, we're going to speak directly and honestly about the finances. We've got two wonderful gentlemen here that are going to talk about this. But for the last several years, we have not communicated the finance well enough. Some of the reports stopped, the oversight has slipped. We fell out of compliance with the systems that we put in place to guide us. And we should do better, and we are. And the good news is, is that work has already started. And thanks to the exceptional efforts of Henry and Dan here, they have kind of untangled years' worth of system changes and other things that have happened, and have done just a really great job. And their work has been wonderful and sacrificial. And so before they start, I think we should give these guys a round of applause for their hard work. They've been here about a year, working on this right now. And so they've done a whole lot in a year, very proud of them. And so they've got a wonderful presentation for you today. After the presentation is done, or during the presentation, I really do encourage you guys to ask lots of questions, right? That is healthy, and that's what we need. Again, you guys are the owners, and we need to know what questions you're on your mind, what you're thinking about, how you're feeling. So I really do encourage you to ask those. And if you don't feel comfortable asking them today, come up and ask them afterwards, or via email. But I really do encourage your participation. We want to know what you're thinking and what you're feeling. So before we jump in, and I'm going to let Dan take the lion's share of the presentation, because he has brought these numbers into an understandable compliance, I need to say thank you. I get to work with such an amazing team. If you don't know Tama, and she's going to try to hide back there, but you can tell because she's got that embarrassed smile on her face, like, hey, you're pointing me out again. Just give a wave. Everybody just give a clap for her. Tama is in the office day in, day out. The fact that she did not walk out a year ago just speaks to her character. She has stuck it in through thick and thin. This woman is amazing. If you see her, don't just say thank you, hand her cash. You know, it just, she is amazing, so I am so thankful for her. And these two have put together an incredible team, and I'm going to miss somebody. But Barb Bean is in there in the office helping out. Nancy Burning over here has done just such an incredible job coming alongside. Joan Smith, she helps out in so many ways. We got Todd Simon, Stan Bebrick. These people keep us in compliance, they give of their time, and I'm so thankful. If you see those folks, give them a huge thanks. When we get to the HR stuff, Scott Hinton, he's not here today. He and his family are on a well-needed vacation. He goes above and beyond with all of our personnel issues. When you see what we've been able to do for personnel, Scott has been the man behind that. He puts in about 30, 40, 50 hours a week. This is his very, very, very part-time contracted for 23 hours a week. He's a full-time firefighter, and he just gives so much. So huge thanks to him. And the man that has put so much together is Dan Wonderland. Now, Dan, he is a CPA by trade. We've contracted him to get this in alignment. He also is the C-G-C, that would be Chief Gutter Cleaner. He comes in, he cleans the gutters. Some of you may know him as Coach. I will warn you, when we get to the question time, he is also the wrestling coach. So if any of the questions get too hostile, that's the real reason he's here today. He'll lock you up. And no, Dan has been amazing, but the amount that he's done in such a short amount of time, as I've talked to other accountants, other CPAs, auditors, they look at me and they go, he pulled that out in that amount of time. Generally, we'd have three to four people working about a year and a half to two years to do what he did. So if you guys can just give a great big round of applause for Dan.
Thanks, Henry. In case you don't know who I am, I'm Arlene's husband. Arlene's has been a member here for a long, long time. She was baptized here. We were married here 40 years ago this August. This has been our family home church for 30 years. We've had three kids go through here. We've now got five grandkids in the school. So we obviously have a vested interest in making all of this work. And yes, I have cleaned gutters. I cleaned the gutters in the Olick Center when the trees were growing out of the gutters. We took care of that. And yes, I have coached wrestling a couple of different times and done a lot of different things. But today, we're here to talk about the financials. So we have spent about a year looking at everything and making some changes. And the slides we're going to go through, kind of talk about that. So the first slide basically is just showing what the organization is. And we have a school and a church, that's a well-known fact. We also have a shopping center. Today's presentation is not really about the shopping center so much, but we are going to talk about it. The financials that we're going to go through, I've excluded the shopping center just because we need to make some changes in the financials with regard to accounting for them. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out first. As Henry said, about a year ago, we got started looking at things. A year ago this month, well, last month now, they had just been going through a conversion of financial systems. It started back in September of 2023. We were using a system called Shepherd Staff. They determined that it wasn't really taking care of what they needed, so they thought, well, we need to make an upgrade. And they decided to go with a system called Sage Intact. And it was supposed to be a six-month conversion. Turned into a seven-month conversion. And then at the end of seven months, we still didn't have a bank reconciliation. We still didn't have a financial statement. That's when Henry and I talked. So they brought me in to help complete the Sage conversion. And with Tama and Barb and Nancy's help, by July, we were able to reconcile all the bank accounts, produce our first statements. And everything was okay. We knew Sage Intact was a decent system. But in my opinion, and I've worked with a lot of systems, it wasn't the right system for us. It was very, very robust, but with a robust system, you have to have people to be able to support it. And we would have to rely too much on the CPA firms in order to do that. In July as well, we got our bill for the renewal of Sage Intact, and it was $9,200. So the annual subscription fee was $9,200. We thought that was a lot of money for a system that wasn't really doing what we thought it should do. So we started looking around, and Henry and I were both familiar with QuickBooks. So we were able to find QuickBooks online through TechSoup for $170 a year. Huge savings from the $9,200 that we were looking at. And we really felt that it would do what we wanted it to do and more. And I think, and Tama will agree, it well surpassed what we thought it would do. And we're doing great with it. Not that everything's perfect at this point. We're getting there. We've got a list of things to do yet. This is my things-to-do list. But we're working on it, and we'll get through it. Today, we're going to talk about budget and how the actuals compare to budget. One of the things that we've done in the last year is we've decided to change the fiscal year. The fiscal year prior to this year was always the calendar year. This is now a school and a church, and the school calendar, it more aligns with a July-through-June fiscal year. So we made the decision to change the budget year to July-through-June. So we're going to show you some 2024 financial statements. Those are on a calendar basis. We're also going to show you first quarter of 2025. Coming up, obviously, we're in second quarter of 2025. The first two quarters of '25 are going to be on a, it's an interim budget. And we basically just based it on the '24 budget. And then, starting in '25, we're going to be going to July-through-June. So it'll be a change in the fiscal year. But we do have the ability to do any kind of statements that we need. So even though we're moving to a different fiscal year, we can produce any kind of statements that we want. This is our balance sheet, or Statement of Financial Position, as it's called in the nonprofit world. I know it's hard to see, and we will be getting this information out in the next week or so. But I'll speak to the highlights. And I gotta get my notes here. So Holy Cross has operating bank accounts that we use to pay the bills for the operations, the school side, the church side, et cetera. But we also have what we call ancillary accounts. The ancillary accounts cover like the PTL and the sports teams, and the Chancel Guild and things like that. In total, at the end of 2024, we had, it looks like $927 million in the bank. We also have the endowment as another asset, and that was almost $3.5 million. And we've got that split between three different accounts. One in PNC, one in the Lutheran Foundation, and one in LCEF. In 2024, one of the changes that we made, we started looking at the interest that we are making on our funds. And as you can tell, just by looking at our bank account at the end of '24, we have a lot of cash sitting in the bank. We don't always have that much cash. Because of the way the school is paid, it's peaks and valleys. The school basically gets paid in the fall and in the spring, nothing in between. So we have times where we've got a lot of cash, and times where we, you know, we're managing our cash. Well, at the end of 2024, we decided that we needed to change the place we put our cash because we simply just weren't earning anything on it. We had bank accounts where we were earning .01%. We had, it was on the average, and I kind of misspoke yesterday. I said .2%, and that was an overestimate. We had accounts at .01, .02, .03, and our Biggie was paying a whopping .3%. Crazy. I have a statement here. Of course, when I knew I misspoke, I had to go check it out. So in December of 2023, in our one bank account, we had $170,000 at the end of 2023. For the month, we earned $1.33 in interest. To me, that wasn't a good way to manage our funds. For the year, in that account, we earned $14.76. Crazy. So after much discussion, we decided to open an account at Edward Jones. And we are now earning a far better rate. The money is invested in US Treasury bonds. It's a mutual fund of US Treasury securities. So we feel like it's a fairly safe investment, so to speak. We're now earning about 3.3% on that money. Since we implemented this in late November through April 1st, we had earned $25,000 or $24,000 in interest. We're now earning about $7,000 to $8,000 a month. And we expect, when I get the statement, probably tomorrow, that we'll see an $8,000 to $9,000 dividend on our investment. Nice little change. Okay. In addition to the endowment and the Edward and Jones, we have a little bit... Well, in 2024, we did not. We had some receivables for the garden in '23, but not '24. Our total assets at the end of '24 was $5.9 million. Davis pointed out yesterday, you know, or asked a question yesterday, is where's the assets? The fixed assets, this building, all the, you know, the church office, the Olick Center, et cetera. The accounting methodology that's used for Holy Cross is called the Modified Cash Basis Accounting. And the fixed assets are merely listed on the financial statement as a footnote. The last CPA-generated statements that we had estimated the value of these properties that we own to be around $17.2 million. They're not listed here, but that's listed in the footnotes. Okay, on the liability side, we had current liabilities of $8,300. That's basically payroll, taxes, and things like that that were due. We also had a loan of $354,000. That was for the office building and the garden, the loan we had on those. Henry will talk about this here shortly, but that loan is now gone. It's all paid off. The rest is equity. So equity is the amount that we, as shareholders, stockholders, contributors, that's our value that we have. This is the breakdown from 2023 of where those funds are. So we have, the Biggie is the Endowment Fund at $3.1 million. We have Reserve Special Gift Funds of $210,000. Those are the donations that are made for specific purposes. For the, you know, we want flowers for the altar, et cetera. That's all part of that. So we track that and make sure that, you know, it's accountable and the funds are there when we need them. We also have facilities funds, school funds, ministry funds, et cetera. In total, there's $3.7 million. I'm showing you 2023 because we're still cleaning 2024 up. And I'm hoping that in the next two weeks, I'll have the 2024 put back together.
What is the ancillary funds? What's in that?
The ancillary funds would be all the sport teams, the PTL, the school cafeteria.
What's in the group funds?
The group funds were different groups. I have a slide. Yeah, women's ministry, I think, is in that grouping. We have a... In total, we have 99 funds, okay? And that's really what this slide shows. There's 99 funds in total. Ancillary funds has five different groups. There are 17 funds in that group. The reserve fund, there's 55 funds in that group, seven different categories. The categories being like, you know, ministries, a certain category. Sports would be a certain category. It's just wherever, you know, we bucketed things. And we need to clean this up. This is on my list. There's too many funds to manage. But that's down the road. We want to get everything stable first before we start to start looking at that. Other cleanup efforts would be our chart of accounts. We have 534 accounts that we try to manage. Chris, my accountant, right there, went, wow. My rule of thumb, I've always heard, is 200 is too many. We have more than twice that. All right, going now to the financial statement. And you got to understand, and accountants here will understand this, everything's on the cash basis. When we get cash, we record it. When we pay an expense, we record it. That's when it hits the statement. That's what the cash basis means. I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan because there's too many peaks and valleys. But I think in the future, I would like to move to a more, what's called an accrual-based accounting methodology. And the thing is, with QuickBooks, we can do both at the same time. So, but it takes away some of the peaks and valleys. In 2024, operating income, we had $4,428,000. We budgeted $4,314,000. So what you're looking at here, what these columns represent, the first column is actuals for 2024. The second column is the budget. The third is the variance in dollars, and the fourth is variance in percents. So in 2024, we brought in $112,000 more than what we thought we would, almost $113,000. It was kind of split between the congregation and school, about 60/60. So I mean, obviously, that's a good thing. We brought in more revenues than we thought we would. On the expense side, operating expenses. We had $4.3 million in operating expenses. We budgeted $4.3 million. So I'm rounding, obviously. We were $60,000 under budget from an expense standpoint. We were $112,000 over budget from an income standpoint. So from an operations standpoint, we were $170,000 to the good in 2024. Now, this doesn't include some of our non-operating income. The operating income and expense just takes care of what the monies that it takes to run this enterprise that we have, called a church and a school. Our non-operating income is what we call our ancillary stuff. So the non-expected or things that we can't really budget for. So we had another $837,000 in revenue there, $922,000 in expenses. It's actually a loss, but keep in mind, it's a timing thing. The loss was really because we were behind in accounting. We didn't pay our, we have some internal accounting going on with our cafeteria. And we didn't settle up with the cafeteria. We were six months behind, and that's what that number represents. We are on time now. It's really kind of cool because we were months behind a year ago. We get things done about two or three days after the month closes now. So much-needed improvement. So overall, our net income for the year, when you include the non-operating stuff, we were $86,000 to the good when we budgeted for a slight loss. So all in all, for 2024, we didn't do too bad. So here's 26, or excuse me, 2025. Now, what you have to understand is, you're going to see some great numbers here, but you have to understand the business, the business of the school mainly. You're going to see, you know, we're $100,000 more in income than we budgeted. You're going to see we're under in expenses. It's peaks and valleys again. It's the school, the way the school payments are made to us. It's the way we get our bills and pay them. Right now, we've got a profit of $438,000 for the quarter. Incredible, right? Well, the fact is, that's the way this business runs. First quarter's always good. Second quarter, not so much. Third quarter, not so much. Fourth quarter's great. Going back to what I said earlier, we get paid by the state in the fall, fourth quarter, and in the spring, third quarter. And we have to manage all that. So we usually have losses budgeted in the first quarter, losses, or excuse me, in the second quarter, in the third quarter, and big gains in the first and the fourth. And that's exactly what you're seeing here.
I'm going to let Henry speak to this stuff. Oh, this is a fun one. So when you see the word ERC, that is an Employee Retention Credit. If you see Mr. Mark Lang, give him a hug. He put hours and hours and hours into this. What this was, was when COVID happened, anybody remember that? We had a global pandemic. Things got a little weird. The smart thing would have been to say, well, kids aren't in school. We lay everybody off, we save the money. We didn't. We decided kids still needed to be educated, and we still needed teachers to do that, and everybody got paid. And our government said, well, we want to help out people that did that. And Mark Lang filled out paperwork after paperwork after paperwork. And in May, we finally started getting those credits. We had promised, we are not done. We have one withstanding. And once we have the final payout, we'll have a final number, and we'll figure out exactly what we're going to do with that. But the promises that had been made was, number one, to take care of the loans. So we had a loan withstanding on the garden and the church office. And the first thing we did, as we told you we were going to, is that is paid off in full. So... And I will pass that along to Mark Lang, because he's the one that filled out the paperwork. We're really excited about that. Now, technically, since North Anthony is a separate holdings company, we can actually, for the next month and a half, go, Holy Cross is debt-free. So that's kind of exciting. That's kind of exciting. Then we'll break ground on this and won't be anymore. But we're really, really, really excited about that. The other thing we were able to do, we've been behind on salaries across the board here at Holy Cross. We were able to give bonuses this year. The total amount was $88,000 in employee bonuses. So we were able to say thank you to all those people that worked really hard. So we were thrilled about that. The ERC money is still coming in. The ERC money is still coming in, and once we have that final payment, we'll have the board, we'll have some meetings, and we'll figure out exactly what we're gonna do with any remaining amounts. The other thing that's going on, as you know, we've got the capital campaign. It's going great. We are excited. We've brought in $670,000 that we've actually brought in of the pledges. I'm sorry, $670,000 received in '25. I misspoke. When you add that to what we brought in in '24, we've received $216,000 toward this. So that's really exciting. It's a little bit more fun to have meetings where people clap. I like this better. So what we've done with that money so far, $302,000, we've paid to MKS to get the roof worked on. The flat roof is finishing up. They are to the point that they are cleaning the roof. Just so you know, they clean it with a petroleum-based product that smells a whole lot like gasoline. And if you accidentally spill that product, it smells a whole lot like natural gas. And one might think there was a natural gas leak in a school, right as drop-off is happening, and have to evacuate. That would be fun. You can tell who knew what happened last week, and that actually happened. We're that close. They'll be doing this roof and that roof here in the next couple of weeks if the rain holds off. So we're excited. We'll have a roof that doesn't leak, and that's gonna be so good. What else have we done? We've paid $16,000 to Design Collaborative. They are our architect. So they are to the point that they are putting together all the architectural drawings. Andy Hesterman and I went down, and we did the first walkthrough on interiors, and we've met with them on mechanicals. So very shortly, we'll be bringing the building team back together to look at it and double-check what the architect's been doing, but we've been able to pay them. And then we've paid $41,000 out of that to LCEF for all the project management. So we're moving forward on this building. We're still on track that the loan paperwork should be turned in, hopefully, by the end of this week. We're doing it a little bit differently. We're making sure everything pencils with LCEF getting approval for any loan amount. That's both bridge loan and ongoing loan. We will then bring it to the congregation for the final vote. We don't want to get the cart before the horse, where we vote to borrow a whole bunch of money, and then they don't let us. So we're getting all those ducks in a row, but still on track to break ground late July, early August, and get dirt moving for the preschool. New employee raises will go into effect in August 2025, so we were able to raise our base salary across the board. We are now, just so you know, competitive-wise, they did away from district scale about five years ago. They made it a national range where you enter everything in. So we are now mid to mid-high across the board, so we're competitive with other churches and schools. So that's a really exciting thing as of August 25. And then, as Dan said, right now, we have $3.3 million sitting in our Edward Jones account, actually earning interest. So we're excited about all that stuff, and thank you for hanging through it as we get everything squared away. Now, although North Anthony is a totally separate set of books and a totally separate legal entity, we wanted to just share a little bit of info on that. I think that's next.
Yeah. One comment on the Edward Jones account. Yeah, it's 3.3 million right now. Seems like a lot of money that we've got in the account. Keep in mind that 1.6 million of that is capital campaign-related. The interest that we are earning on that, we're going to allocate it to the capital campaign and to all the other funds based on where the funds came from. So that was a question that came up yesterday. So here's what the balance sheet of the shopping center looks like. This is from December of 2024. It's a holy old subsidiary of Holy Cross, but they do stand alone. It's a separate entity. At the end of 2024, they had $140,000 in cash, sitting in their bank accounts. The asset on their books is 1.2 million. That's the value. That was the value placed on that property when it was purchased, 1.2 million. So that sits on their set of books, not ours. If you go down about two-thirds of the way, you'll see the LCEF loan is approximately $960,000. It used to be $960,000 even, when we were paying interest only. In late 2024, they started paying principal and interest, and they pay that number. We don't subsidize the shopping center. I've had a lot of questions, you know, or a lot of comments where we were paying for the shopping center. We're not. It's a standalone entity. They're paying their own bills. We do not pay part of this loan. At this point in time, everything is all self-contained, and the shopping center is not killing it by any stretch of the imagination, but it's holding its own. The second-to-last line is their equity. They have $365,000 or almost $366,000 in equity. We are the sole shareholder. That is our equity. So when we put that on our balance sheet, that's, in my view, that's the number that needs to go on our balance sheet. That's a good thing. It means they're making money. If that was a big negative, that would mean they're losing money, but they're not. Not saying it's perfect over there, and you can all look at it. It looks like there's some repairs that are needed, but at this point, they're holding their own. This is the income statement from 2024. In total, total income for 2024 was almost $294,000. They had rents of $232,000, additional payments of about $62,000 for taxes, insurance, et cetera. They had $251,000, $252,000 in expenses, so their net income for 2024 was $42,000. Again, not killing it, but making money. Then they also paid about $10,000 in taxes. So even though the nonprofit owns that entity, they still pay taxes, because it's a... What they do is not part of our mission. It's a rental. It's a rental business. So they do pay taxes. They do pay their own taxes. And so after paying taxes, their net income was just over $31,000, almost $32,000. So they are making money. They are making it, not killing it. But I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
When you say "they," who is "they" and also who's managing it?
It's managed by the Zacher, Z-A-C-H-E-R, company. So they do all the accounting for it. We get a monthly report. It's sent through Chad. And, I mean, I guess that's the mechanics of it.
Do they also seek out renters?
Yes. Okay. Henry's gonna talk about the '25, '26 budget.
Thank you. So this is where we're going, and this is also what you'll be seeing next year as far as reports. So as money comes in, we're trying to figure out, because of the cash flow, when to report what. The big income sources, you've got your church income. This is what we collect in tithes and offerings. We're projecting that that should be right at that $1.4 million mark next year. And how that's projected, because people will ask, the congregation elects a board, the board sets policies, the senior pastor shall not fail to blank. One of those is make projections in this way. The senior pastor interprets that, gives that back to the board, and when I came on board, I was handed those interpretations. The interpretation for that line is very simple. You take the average over the last three years, and you are allowed to use a multiplier based on the trend. There's not a whole lot of guesswork on that. What this one is, is because we're in the middle of a capital campaign, there's no accelerator on it. That number is your average of the last three years, with a little bit taken off to make it, to make all the numbers balanced. But that's where we get our projections for the church income. Likewise, the school income is very easy math. The majority of that number is the amount of students we have currently enrolled, times the tuition for next year. We have a few other things in there. That's K through 8. We also have a preschool formula. We have a fee formula. But that's how you get that number. What we're projecting next year is right at $3 million in that. Outside sources are all of those grants that we get. So for example, we get a grant from Indiana for some of the teachers. That's where you get that 219 number. That's why that's the very, very clear-cut number. This is what we know we're gonna get from those sources. The garden income, we're projecting that's what we'll get from rentals. We took away, they were doing some other projected incomes where it got kind of silly, because we were losing money. Whenever you transfer money from one account to another account, somebody takes a fee. And so we were doing that in the past, where when Holy Cross was using the garden, we were actually transferring funds, and every time we did that, we lost about 3%. So we're tracking that differently, but that's why that number's a little bit lower this year. And then we were able to add in that $80,000 of cash flow interest. Now, all that is, that is not the $3.3 million. It's what Dan said. We get these huge drops for the school. So we get a million-dollar drop, but it takes us six months to spend that, so that's where you get that interest amount. Yeah.
Henry, on the garden, in '23, when Dan was presenting that information, it looked like you made some money in the garden. '24, I thought it showed zero.
Correct.
And $54,000 in '25?
Correct. '24, '25, we flatlined it. So the question was, what's going on with the garden income? There was a lot of moving money from one account to another account in '23. We did away with that in '24 and showed real numbers. So when we did all of those capital campaign things over there, we would still have to pay an employee to clean it. We would still have to pay an employee to host it, to make sure it's locked and unlocked. So the garden had that expense. That's still shown, but we didn't transfer money over, because it's still our property. So that's why the numbers are gonna be a little bit inverted moving forward. Did I answer the whole question, or did I miss part of it?
So I just didn't understand how we showed money in '23. We didn't show money in '24 and '25, or we're planning on showing $54,000?
So this is just the income line? I believe there were income lines on '23, '24, and '25.
Yeah, I just thought '24 showed zero.
Oh, it shouldn't have. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, it shouldn't have. If it did, that means that I accidentally hit delete when we were trying to change the font on the slide, which is a total possibility.
That's fine. What did it show?
The line for 2024 that showed zero was the reserve revenue, which would be our interest. In 2024, we actually had almost $51,000 in revenue for the garden, but we also had $80,000 in expenses. So we did lose money technically, but like Henry said, it doesn't include all the internal use of the garden and the greenhouse.
Well, thanks for asking. So what we're gonna start showing is, hey, here's what the income is. And we're probably, we're working through this now that we have this, we're working through it with our communications people to make sure that it gets shared appropriately and timely, while at the same time not being alarmist. That is, when we get the $1.4 million drop for the school, that's exciting, but it's expected. So we're trying to figure out how to communicate that. Also, when we get down to the expense side, these are the expenses that have been given to us. We haven't changed any of them. The big increase you'll see is that salaries and benefit line. The salaries and benefit are going up to almost $4 million. And that's including a pretty substantial, across-the-board pay hike, as well as improvements in the benefit packages. So that's the big difference there. But yeah, so we're looking at bringing in $4.8 million and spending $4.8 million. So the goal is to project a zero, that we, everything we bring in, we spent. Now, next year, I'll just give you a warning. Next year, you'll see a difference there where we will be showing a cash reserve. It'll probably be right about $200,000 in the '26, '27 budget. That will be to cover the loan difference. So we have to report that a little bit differently for LCEF. You're gonna hear me say that almost every town hall leading up to it, so that when people see it, there's no shock. But the goal is to put out that baseline number, and we're looking at right at 4.8 next year. So we're really fairly excited about that. Any questions you all have? Any great jokes you all have heard lately? Oh, no, I heard yours. Yeah. And if you want to step up to the mic, if not, I'll repeat it, but if I twist your words, then...
So, Henry, all this information's fantastic. Are we gonna see this electronically? Is it gonna be distributed in some way to the congregation?
Yes. The question was, this is great to see up here. How will we get it to the rest of the congregation? When you look at your email on Wednesday, this will actually pare it down just a little bit, because some of the slides won't make sense without the verbal context. But yep, this will be going out in the email on Wednesday. So if you don't get that email, let us know, but that's the plan, so that we can get it out there. And the reason for that is, we realized if we put everything out early, then everybody skips the meeting. And then conversations happen in the parking lot, and the amount of rumors that will get out there. My favorite one, by the way, I was on the phone, and probably 10, 12 hours this week, with North Anthony Neighborhood Association. Apparently, Holy Cross is putting in a Dollar Tree next to Dairy Queen, so that we can tear down the North Anthony Center this summer to build a middle school that will belong to Concordia High School. So you heard it here first. I was really excited about the Dollar Tree. Now, just so you know, the actual facts are, we have not even confirmed that that's a Dollar Tree. But that's how quickly the rumors are going out. So we want to have people here so we can have conversations, so that everybody knows, so that we can dispel rumors. And yes, just so, if you could start that, I am the sole owner of the entire Dollar Tree Corporation now, and it's been an inside job just for Henry Graff. That was sarcasm, in case this is being televised. Yes, sir! The statement was, "Salaries are increasing good. Has the size of the staff changed?" I would have to go look where we are this year versus last year. We're probably different by one or two. But not much. I mean, we have, we've increased, as everybody knows, we've increased the in-reach pastor, Don Henry, from part-time to full-time. Or I should say, we've re-increased, because it was full-time, and then we took it down to part-time, and then we took it up to full-time. I'd have to check, Dick. I'd have to check. I think we're pretty close. I want to say there's 83 people currently on payroll, but I haven't checked in a couple months. That was the December number. And by the way, that's everything from a very, very part-time person to senior pastor. Anybody is ran through Payroll. What isn't included on that is a contract employee. So like when Tavis Schlicker leads Saturday night, that's a separate 1099 contract, so we don't run that through payroll. But I can get that for you. on that is a contract employee. So like when Tavish Schlicker leads Saturday night, that's a separate 1099 contract. So we don't run that through payroll. But I can get that for you. Any other questions? Yeah, facilities manager currently, we don't have one. That will be changing very shortly. We're working out all those details now, but that would be, interviews are done. An offer has been made, and we're waiting on a start date. Yes, sir?
Were there any questions asked last night that we should be talking about today?
The question was, were there any questions asked last night that we should be talking about today? Who is my barber, and how is he doing such a great job? That's Jeff Patek, and I don't know how he does such a great job. What now, what we're, I think every question that was asked last night, we incorporated into this morning's presentation is a change. That's your favorite question to ask, by the way, Scott. I notice you ask that in every, I might start preemptively sneaking that in there. Well, fantastic. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the great questions. And as always, if there's other things you want to hear, bring them to the Board of Lay Leaders. Davis said it at the beginning, but we want to communicate better. And unless people talk to the Board of Lay Leaders, we don't know, and to the staff here. But as a former pastor, if I could recommend, talk to the Board of Lay Leaders, because our pastors on Sunday morning, the amount of things that this man probably hears on a Sunday morning, I don't know how he keeps them all straight.
Written down in this offering?
He has them written down on an offering envelope. And I don't know, so let me rephrase. I don't know how our pastor writes so small, because that's a long list. But yeah, if there's questions that you have, keep asking, email. We want to continue to just communicate more clearly and more effectively. And with that, one last thing that pastor can do. Oh, that's right, Davis has something.
One of the other things we did point out, I think, last night, we talked a little bit about the maintenance budget, and how that was going down in '25, because a lot of that was incorporated into the capital campaign, right? Like, we didn't have to fix and maintain certain things like the roof. So the capital campaign was handling those, thus you saw the maintenance budget go down. So I, I think this presentation's great. There's a lot of detail. As you mentioned, we're still not perfect. We're still out of compliance on a few things, based on our own rules, but I think the board is committed to telling you guys about that, and that we're identifying things and trying to improve, and we're well along the way. And that's not about blame, it's just about responsibility, because this is, this is, this is a lot to be responsible for, and we need to be good stewards of it. So we will promise more visibility, more reporting, and more accountability. And that's just going to be the, the standard that we have for you guys. Before we close and let pastor pray, I guess I want to ask you guys a couple things real quick. What do you guys want to talk about next? Right? We've, we had a town hall where we introduced and kind of talked about how governance works. We introduced the board. We've now talked about finances. Is there anything that anybody has questions on that they would want to talk about next? Because my next question's going to be, are these town halls working, or is this the proper way to talk about these? And do you like them on the weekend, or maybe during the week? So, but question one, and feel free, does somebody raise their hand and stand up and tell us now, or it can be via email or phone call. But is there something that we should talk about next?
So now that we have a budget, I assume we have a plan that's going alongside the budget. So it'd be great to hear about what our plans are going forward.
So he asked about, hey, now that we have budget, talking about how are we going to execute on that budget? Things are put in place, so how are we going to track and monitor and stay accountable to the budget?
Yeah, so both the budget, right, like, you know, we're a church, so we also got a ministry plan. So kind of what's the ministry plan, what's the operational plan, all that?
Yeah, so one of the things, just so you guys are aware, because I guess if we think about it like this, you guys are my boss, you're Bill's boss, Matty's boss. Starting in June, so here this month, our next board meeting, we'll review all the policy. And then we've got lined up for August, September, October, and November, we will be reviewing kind of each of the areas and the ends, right? So the school's going to come and say, here's our end that you've given us. We, we might look at changing those, or adding a little more detail to those. And they're going to present us with their goals for the upcoming, I think, one, three, and five years, right? So hey, if you want to be here, let's use the school, for example. School, you want to be here in five years? That means you got to be here in three years. What do we have to do this year? So they will be setting those goals, so that we're looking to get us along. And so we can report back on those goals for each of those, right? And we'll do the same with the, right, the in, and the out, and the up. And then the business side of things, right? Like, Henry's probably going to have some goals with that. So we can, we can report back on how those meetings go. Those are slated to happen in the third quarter. So we can do that. I saw somebody else had their hand raised.
Since we are working on two new pastors, maybe this could be done by an email, but I would like to know what their responsibilities are going to be, and what they're going to be doing, and maybe like, you know, what their plans are in the future.
Yeah, so she said, if everybody didn't hear, the plans for the new positions we brought on, and Henry, I speak that out.
Yeah, so we will be getting that out shortly. And the language that you'll be hearing is wig. So if you ever hear what, if I'm feel free, probably give them until October, but to ask, what are your wigs? And what a wig is, is a wildly important goal. No organization, no individual can ever take on more than two to three wildly important goals at a time. But the, what the wigs are, is we're hedging our bets, that if we do these two or three things, it will move the needle in that ministry area. So once we onboard those staff, the first thing we're going to do is be articulating wigs. And what the wigs will stay, and this is why they take a little bit of time to get there, and if you're bored and like to read nerdy stuff, The Four Disciplines of Execution by McCheeseley is an amazing read that I, I can't recommend highly enough. But it's ascertaining, we're going to move from blank. So it's taking that hard look in the mirror, and saying that this is where we really are right now. We may not like where we are, but this is where we are. So we want to move from blank to blank by blank. Each one of those new hires, as well as eventually, everybody on the staff will be playing to that same language. And yeah, we will, we will be getting those out. Everybody will be onboarded by August, and so we're hoping to have those by September, October. And they will be released to the congregation. Additionally, to the board, we'll have metrics where we're measuring. Part of that is going, we're not just going to, I use the one of diet and exercise, right? Everybody could be healthier. And it's, it's really easy. How do you get healthy? You eat right, and you exercise. And every January, every December 31st, we go, I'm going to get healthier. And usually, that's where we stop, because we don't do that work of saying, I want to move from 21% body fat to 17% body fat by August 31st. Was that way too specific or vulnerable? And if anybody comes up and actually asks me, that's going to be super awkward now. But doing that, but here's what you're going to do to do it. You know, here are the, the simple, repeatable patterns that are going to get us. You know, we want to go from a Holy Cross that has this percentage of the people in the school that are attending church on a weekly basis, to this percentage of people that are attending church on a weekly basis. And here's how we're going to get there. So yep, you can fully expect to see that. And now you know the way it's going to come to you. Thanks for asking, Judy. Yeah?
It's a little brighter up here. Pastor A said, let there be light?
Oh, yes. Pastor A said, let there be light. In fact, that was a few years ago. He was younger then. Right? That's like Jake saying, when I was a younger preacher. Did he say that tonight? Yes. So we finally got the lights put in up front. They were ordered in November, with the hopes of having them put in for Christmas. And the goal was achieved. They will be in for Christmas of '25.
Yeah.
What is the easiest way to get ahold of somebody on the Board of Lay Leaders?
Yeah, the easiest way to get ahold of somebody on the Board of Lay Leaders is it, Davis, what's the new email? Is it president?
It's BLL president.
At Holy Cross?
Is it FW@holycross.org? BLL president FW.
Holy Cross.
At, oh, I'm sorry. BLL president@holycrossFW.org. And so we'll start putting that in the news and notes. Trish has some handouts with the...
These are on the back, on the ledge. They are the information about all of the Board of Lay Leader members, and that address is written across the top. This is the side from the left. Davis, I have one question to answer your question about what we'd like to see next. And I'm really sorry to do this publicly, and my heart is beating out of my chest, but I have sent emails upon emails to Henry and Scott. I've mentioned it to you, I've mentioned it to Pastor and Chad. And because it's a security issue, I really feel it needs to be dealt with. This door, the glass door, is set to auto unlock on Sunday mornings about 7:00 a.m. That has resulted in a parishioner entering and the alarm going off, because I've been called for that. This situation has been in effect since December, and it makes a very tenuous situation for our organists, who usually get here first. Today, I was not surprised when my phone went off, figuring we were going to have this situation happening again, that anyone is walking in, and potentially the alarm is going off, unless the organist got here first and has unset that. It wasn't, it was the organ wasn't working. Solved that, thank you, Jesus. But this is still a problem after seven months, and many communications that this is a security issue, for which we are definitely out of compliance. We need to find a solution together. I propose that perhaps Caleb could be the unlocker. He's here 45 minutes before the service. Once he's in the building, the organist is in the building, if Caleb is not here as our tech person, then one of the gentlemen up front, liturgist or pastor, would have to take the responsibility of unlocking the door. On Sunday morning, parishioners are here 45 minutes in advance of service to help us be prepared. Could we please find a solution together? Sorry to ask this publicly.
Sorry, we'll have it fixed by next weekend. That, that, no, we won't.
Yeah, as I've explained, the, the problem is a systematic problem. We are trying to figure out how to access a, a thing in the system that is auto-scheduled, that we don't know how to fix yet. It was preset. We don't know how to preset it. We don't know how to un-preset it. We will be bringing in a, we're bringing in a person this summer who has expertise in those areas. And yeah, that's, that's the solution, but it will not be fixed by next week. It's something in the FOB system that we don't know how to access yet.
You know, two people that do know how to access it, are we not?
Here, how about, here?
Let's take it offline. We'll get it addressed and fixed. Thank you for bringing it up. But yeah, that's something we'll get addressed. So I guess before I let you go, pass this to you in closing prayer. One of the, the things I think we should talk about next, and again, I would like to hear back, the board would like to hear back from you guys on, do you want to, is town hall the proper way to do this? And if we do continue to do the town halls, do you guys want to do them after the services, or like on a Wednesday night? What works best for you guys? So please let us know that. I think we need to talk about the school next. When we stood up here a couple, over the last couple months, the, the number one thing after finances that I've gotten the most questions about are things about the school. As we went over the budget, and look, the school's 75% of the budget. We're just getting a lot of questions. I think we just need to do some education. I'm not saying there's anything wrong. We just need to do some education on things around the school. And we do have a growing set of stakeholders that, that, in the school that don't attend church. And there's just a lot of questions, I think, that need to be answered on, on how we run the school. So that's something I think we should go over next to the town hall, but I'd like to hear back from you guys and what you think. So please reach out to that email, let us know. And then if there's no more questions, we're going to give it to you to close us in prayer.
All right, I have two announcements, and then we'll sing the Common Doxology. Actually, three now. I have noted every one of you that's been here today, because now that you all know that the doors automatically unlock at 7:00 a.m., if there's any mischief in here between now and then, you're all suspects. So at any rate, sometimes it's not good to know. Number two, please remember, and I think I'm preaching to the choir here, you know, a lot of people look at numbers, and they say, I give towards something. I give toward a budget. That's not Christian stewardship. Christian stewardship is, I give out of the abundance that God has blessed me with. And I think we've always got to emphasize that. We have pretty good numbers today. If those numbers were poor, well, maybe we do the tithe, and then we do some more beyond that. But man, I've taught it, we've lived it, Janet and me and our lives. It's just that, you know, the budget number means nothing to me in terms of my giving. My giving is out of what God has given to me. And thirdly, since Henry challenged me on a joke, a joke I tell the kids every year in school, and it's my favorite joke, they hear it every year, why don't sharks like clowns? I tell their, my grandchildren roll their eyes, why don't sharks like clowns? Because they taste funny. I get the same reaction out of the kids, too. Hey, let's rise now and close by singing the Common Doxology. We sing together, praise God from whom all blessing flow, praise Him all creatures here below, praise Him above ye heavenly hosts, praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. Have a fantastic, close to your weekend. God bless you. Go in peace. Serve Him with joy.